Few things truly entertain.
I'm sure you're viewing UDC.
Well, I deal with the wall of terror.
It's pretty good.
I mean, certainly.
I asked the guy go through the whole set at one time.
Yeah.
And then we'll go around, around the horn and ask everybody. Rather than individually trying to have, we have a question about this one. We have a question that, depending on the fact that you all have been doing this. Question.
Yeah. Having a hard time sleeping.
Basically, fewer required parking spaces. Fewer chickens. More winery, it's more activity.
Not roosters.
That's right. And my account still applies to chickens. It's a lot easier to get into something than it is to get out of something. That's true. You can have chickens, you just can't get rid of them if you don't want them. Yeah, so no name.
That's different by a vote.
Yeah. Yeah, because you can't take it to the town. So. You know, our former sheriff, I thought was very succinct about this. He says, in money incorporated in County, you are allowed to discharge your fire. You are responsible for. And so, you know, you can take care of your chicken. I think that's probably a better way of doing it than to try to pin them down to the nine millimeter.
Yeah. Yeah. My grandfather, he started their names.
See, I'm a. Thanks, chickens. And I'm content with that level of information.
That's all you need to know.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Need to know basis and I know.
Yeah, that's my daughter. She doesn't care where they come from. She loves the. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think it'd be so much process to do.
Now, my father-in-law would speak up. I'm not. At country club instead of the Canada at three o'clock in the morning. It's 20 years old. But if they would let me go to Athens Country Club, sitting in Fairway, they'd take care of their problem. I would happy to do it.
I thought you lost that love for dread face.
No. I just, I want, I want to eat. Yeah, I mean, it's last time.
Yeah. He's breaking here.
Like so, I'm sitting there and die for five.
Right.
Best time you could dress that.
Oh, yeah. You know, it's funny. Don't say, you don't need to.
Well, that's, that's, that's Chuck's good one right there. Does not often forget that. Let our people goes. Astonishing, it is. Taxpayers' dollars. It sounds like an oil field.
You could cut taxes by adding commercials. Do you like football? We're ready to go. The way for TV to say we can come back.
He says, that's about the important part of the podcast. That's what news is. All the herbal is on screen along crawl. This one. Thank you.
We're having a bit of a technical glitch that's holding us up for a minute. Guy, do we have any signage? Yeah, I just, I haven't seen them yet. This one. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Astonishingly, no one signed up to speak either in favor of this composition to UDC text. I will try to contain my disappointment. I was thinking.
Certain unnamed act like you in here with illegal. It might be one reason the stock's not worth as much as it used to be. So it's working. Okay.
Okay. Audio work.
Interesting. So when you just had a screen change here, we lost our. Lost our. Icon. So. Somebody got the cover on the camera.
It's a. Yeah. It's not.
So shall we proceed? Okay. All right. Yep.
Yeah.
Would we rather, do we want to pivot that so they can see us?
There is only one point on the speaker.
All right, thanks to everyone for their patience. I will call this meeting of the O'Conne County Planning Commission to order. Good evening and welcome to the February 21st, 2022 meeting of the O'Conne County Planning Commission. We are a recommending body to the O'Conne County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made tonight on rezoning requests and other issues will be forwarded to the O'Conne Board of Commissioners or appropriate city council for final action. This is the procedure we follow. The O'Conne County Planning Department staff presents their report and recommendations on each request. Public input is received from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative. Public input is then received from a group representative or any individuals wishing to speak in favor of the request. This period will be limited to 20 minutes total. Public input is then received from a group representative or any individuals speaking in opposition to the request. This period will also be limited to 20 minutes total. The petitioner or petitioner's representative is allowed an opportunity for response or clarification if time remains in their 20-minute period. The public input session will then be closed. The planning commission will discuss the request and may ask questions of planning department staff and/or the petitioner. Upon a motion and a second, and after any discussion of the motion, the planning commission will vote on the motion. The commission may elect to approve, modify, place conditions on, table, or deny a motion. We ask that you observe the following items regarding public input. Upon approaching the podium, please state your name and home address. Please direct your comments to the planning commission and not to the audience. When there are multiple speakers, please avoid repeating statements made by previous speakers so that there is time to hear from everyone. We ask the audience to extend the courtesy of not applauding or commenting on any of the speakers. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the January 18th meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes in front of you. Please take a moment to review and suggest any modifications, corrections, or clarifications. Hearing none, I'll call for a motion. Motion to approve from Scott. Second from Mike. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Okay. Any opposed, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. First item of business, new business on the agenda is rezoned P21-0244.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, this is P21-0244. John and Angela Martin, applicants and owners. It's located just off of 441 along Wild Azalea Lane. This is the parcel, subject parcel of the rezon request. It's currently zoned AR in the Civic Center character area. And the request is to rezone the property from AR to AR in order to modify the architectural sketches approved under the previous rezon 6645. Now, this is the concept plan that you have in your packets zoomed in. And the current zoning reflects this type of elevation is primarily a brick. They're requesting to change it to these types of exterior siding with the hardy plank and some stone accents. So. Staff recommends approval with one condition. Thank you.
At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative.
Hi, my name is Angela Martin and the co-owner of 1820 Wild Azalea Lane. And the previous reason asked that we have mostly masonry. And we would like to incorporate a more colonial appeal. And that would be hardy board or, you know, cementous siding and with the stone accents like Guy mentioned. And so we're hoping that we can make our new dream home that way and just ask for your approval of that. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have John Martin signed up to speak in, in support. You're welcome to if you'd like.
I'm John Martin, co-owner of 1820 Wild Azalea with Angela. I asked for approval and I approved of these changes. I request that over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return the request to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll wait for motion. Request. P21. Dash zero two. With the one.
Motion from Matt and Penny. Second Penny, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Is unanimous. Next item is rezoned P21-0262, William, Kyle, and Shannon Sess.
Thank you, Chairman.
While you're doing that, I'll, I'll do what Chuck usually asks me to do later in the meeting, which is after your case has been heard, you're not obligated to stay and participate in local government, but you're welcome to if you'd like.
I mean, the post board is out.
Okay, again, thank you, Chairman. This is P21-0262. The request is to reason a portion of the larger parcel is currently sound, big, decent, suburban. They were prepared area. Again, the request is a reason from AG to R1. This is the concept plan that you have. One half acre out of the larger. And staff recommends additional approval on one and two are standard conditions. Number three, staff does recommend that property be rezoned to AR instead of R1. And if you're too late, remember lot sizes.
All right, thank you, Guy. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's agent. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I have a question for Mr. Sess. Okay.
Mr. Sess, would you come back up to the podium, please?
I'm going to two records that put any undue hardship on me. Okay. All right, thank you.
My question was along the same lines, but not for the Sess or to, not to you, sir. More to the county. The idea of keeping it two acres, if that drawing is true to the property lines by adding half an acre, we're going to make a lot of zigzaggy property lines. And if one of our purposes is to keep it usable ag, it would seem neater to let it be one and a half. Circumstances, because the other property that's, you know, divided off of that same parcel is more even line.
Yeah, so staff believes that 1.5 or one is not appropriate in this area. But on a large acre, the larger acre blocks and the two acres is more appropriate. And there is additional acreage, there is seven to the plus acres there.
I understand that side of it, but R1 with a septic tank, they can't really divide much smaller than 1.5. So even if we approve R1, we're not actually opening ourselves up to a sub division. Those that 1.5 into a smaller parcel. But if the, if the map is correct, the parcel lines would be a lot neater if they, the larger parcel wanted to cut hay or even run cattle, the fencing. What would be, we're keeping it nice and neat. So I have this question. Staff recommendation number three.
I have one before you go to, I noticed on.
No, that's good.
Inside the first page, a building permit was issued January 22 and residence is currently under construction already.
On 17 acres. Or 70 acres. Couldn't say that happened beforehand.
Man, this is on the parcel to the left. You're standing, you're standing on main hall, Mark Fountain. You've got the lot to the left. Nope. The larger piece is directed to the left of this.
The same owner.
Same owner. Okay. And approximately what depth is that long? Just this front back, I couldn't read on mine. My glasses aren't quite valid.
I don't have that.
You know, half hour could be made up in a very, very narrow strip. 200 foot strip. Take much. Even a half acre. Matter of few feet. Pardon me? Oh, so you could add that little small.
Gentlemen, please.
We're talking about the left side.
Gavin, Gavin, do you have a question for the petitioner?
Yeah, I'm just trying to determine that we've got, we're asking for an essential amendment to our to our current usage that requires two acres. So I would assume if the neighbors to the left.
Mr. Sess, would you come back up? Appreciate you getting your core work to see.
Yeah, so that is true. On the main side that I currently own, right, it's a really good rectangle. And I had this little almost perfect 1.5. And my wife and I don't leave. True form on the left here. That's the one size. That's the one size. But that does go past seven hundred fifty, eight hundred some feet, I think, when that's out. But the reason I did that too was to keep it clean line definition and then seeing the R one across, you know, Princeton across that big old something.
You're talking about the largest piece.
The large was my house before the building permit, because the builder's already started on charge of foundation. That is under contract right now.
And so it's between you and the large tract land that's. It'd be tougher for them to do anything. But you're like, what size is your lot?
Seventeen and change seventeen point one, the total was eighteen point seventeen. But it goes very deep.
Okay, well, you know. Don't talk about this is twenty feet.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
It's okay if I stand and point to this and we're all.
Thank you, Mr. Sess.
This is the one a question, right? And that's the seventeen acres. Yes. This is another house. So if it were half an acre we're talking about. I mean, I guess the way I see it is if you did something like that rectangularly, it does kind of as you indicate, but you can also do a wedge. And you've got, is there any any requirement on the the type of cutout? So I think that, I don't know, I could see where there's. One diagonal that's still a straight line.
If you're standing on on the, on down there, looking at the lot, that lot that the question is. To the left of that lot, if you're standing on the roadway, which would be lower, the south end of this road. Exactly. Do we know who that homeowner is? And if they've been, has anyone talked to them about a purchase of? And what would you say the depth of that lot is? The one that tried to change from that side.
Three hundred and fifteen point seventy nine.
We're talking about a little over twenty one hundred square. Twenty one hundred square feet, like that, right? What'd you say that total was?
On on the side next to the to the to the feather property. It's three hundred and fifteen point seventy nine. On on the sign that abuts Mr. Sess's primary lot, it's three hundred and twenty seven point eighty two.
And so if you got, if you fit that into forty three. What is that amount of, I just. Yeah, spoken well, I mean, it seems to me that if they had to go two acres, they should go to that option up there or or since he owns it, Jason Peace.
Take a sixty four foot wide swath along that property line.
And the county would carry it if they wanted, if there was some, some deal worked out with the purchase of seventy four acres. And then it'd be, they'd put right back in a calculation for some buffer requirement still would not, that would not affect. If the neighbor next door says, I'm willing to sell it so you can meet your acre requirement, and I don't want all those trees to down. Or I don't want, you know. You know, I I'd like somewhat of a small buffer between us.
So so the same owner owns the subject tract that we're talking about splitting out and the seventeen acres.
It's it's north seventeen acres up there. Talking about the lower.
Well, nothing affects the little piece. The only effect, the only effect would be to do would be to increase in this acreage.
Okay, in the buyer of this existing lot we're talking about, it has not spoken with the lower lot. Which is to the left or the down downhill. There's no noise, nobody's spoken with that.
Any other questions or comments? Not I'll entertain a motion. Alright, Mike.
The motion that we approved and we have staff position one and two.
So second that since I kicked the hornets nest.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Mike, hang on with me for a second, please, since we're not unanimous. Mike, Scott. Matt, Stephen and Chuck. All opposed, please signify by raising your right hand. Penny and Chris. Motion carries. Did I miss Gavin? I'm sorry, Gavin. Were you a ye or a nay? Nay, alright. One, two, three, four, five. Yes, sir, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is rezone P twenty one dash oh two six six. And concurrently, we'll hear special use P twenty one dash oh two sixty seven, Bafa Erickson LLC. Thank you, Guy. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioners.
My name is Frank Pittman, I live fourteen hundred Saxon Road. I'm here tonight representing the property owner as well as the developer, who is also here, Mr. Rick Maxson, along with the broker, Ben Doster. Rick has developed this, this religious twelve car wash in this area of the state, he's developing a second and a third. So he's, he's done this quite a bit. As Mr. Harry mentioned, the subject properties, it's a Marshall Road, just just to the left of the Golden Pantry. The request is for two point seven acres. Currently, it's only be one, a reason on the two thousand five or a strip retail center. Since two thousand five, you know, there have been a number of changes in that area. I think retail probably is not. The honest thing right now. Marshall Road was also widened and the driveway location was set by G dot, which made it a little bit harder to develop this property without it being a smaller footprint type development. So we're here tonight to to ask for a approval for a car wash use, which falls under the existing zoning class. It does require special use because it's in Marshall overlay. So we're asking for that as well. Car wash use will be less intensive as far as traffic and utilities goes than the approved strip center that that's approved on the property today. Tax generated from county without. I think it's where everybody wants the traffic that that is generated by car wash. The good thing about car washes is that they're they're busy times of day and not the same times that school traffic is. Traffic, that's not what this site is. It fits in well with with the surrounding areas. It does meet the required usual needs map if it falls into this zoning class. Staff has recommended approval and I'm here tonight to ask you guys to do the present approval as well.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the request? Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the request? Would anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to the request?
They're cognizant of that. Make sure that. Those are some of the concerns that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Mr. Pittman, you have some time to clarify or answer any questions if you'd like.
Yeah. I appreciate the comments faster. I'm, I guess I, what I would, what I would say to the comments are, the the request. This this request is the front part of the property, not not the back of the property that's adjacent to the church. That's under a separate. We're we're cutting off right here about halfway back at CBS property. We're not in the back of the property that will be a separate request.
I think you're thinking of the wrong church. There's a church right up.
Oh, the left side. Yeah, yes, I I I understand. And I know about the graves because years ago I did plans for the shopping center down the hill. They had run a sewer line all the way. Right away. So yes, we will be very cognizant of that. We. As you can see, the kind of the left hand side of the property adjacent to the church is. But but we will be very careful for sure. As far as a buffer goes, there is a a small required buffer.
I listed as two foot.
But it would be, you know. Right along the popular lines would be left as a small buffer.
Thank you, sir. Alright, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and return the request to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Question for staff or the petition? For whoever can answer.
The access to that five and a half acres. Is that gonna be access through that private drive that goes alongside the car wash?
Yeah, and that's why the plan, we would be extending it back to places of the point where the reason stops. And that would be a privately owned shared drive.
Thank you.
Did I read something about deceleration line? Anyway, the driveway, just straight in. Yeah, my question is, there's. It's not.
Yeah, you're right, right, that's all.
Are you guys proposing kind of plant a buffer between any of your ten foot area?
We would be, we would be doing what UDC requires that be. Once we get into the planning, I have a discussion with the addition of that.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for you or for. Is there a plan for water recovery? Ten thousand times three sixty five, it's three point six million gallons.
Yeah, we have, say, water.
Okay, so you do have water recycled.
Typically, there's three, two thousand gallon replacement tanks and then there's a thousand gallon groundwater separation that the county requires.
And is that part of?
Typically, the counties require it. Some counties do.
So is that in this, is that in?
We did it in the last one. We did one of it. I built the car wash up on that bridge.
Yeah, I'm I'm wondering if it's, what do we need to do to make that?
That's that's part of the. I just wanted to add to, the DOT already has the curb cut and the driveway set there. So there's a lot of road drainage there and we lose a lot of the left side. So there's a lot of space between us and the church that's never gonna be developed. You see that big long triangle on the left side of the road? Really, it's too small to do anything with. So we're really losing, could be two lots. Doing one, my original plan wasn't to do two lots, but because the DOT curb cuts already there, we kind of lose that whole left side. So there'll be, it shows a ten foot buffer, but there's.
Any other questions?
I didn't want to make sure I understand correctly what is going to be put in that ten foot. Undisturbed or is it going to be planned? What exactly is going to be in there by the?
So that's probably a question for staff. Isn't that the guy would come up and speak to that, please? Thank you, gentlemen.
So, so typically, an unstirred buffer, an unstirred buffer would be an unstirred buffer, however, if it was not opaque around, a lot of screening, then it would be something. Looks pretty heavily treated at this point, of course, it does, or it would, or anything like that, so. So we would, through our, through the permitting process, we would ensure that the, the proper screening is there.
My main concern, just making sure we have a good screen there blocking the view of the cemetery from the car wash. I think that would be more appropriate for the center.
It is all.
Yeah, I think we've, we've been planning. They have green screen.
That would be fantastic.
Guy, is that, is that a given under the code or is that something that we should stipulate as a condition to the rezon?
It's a given under the code, but it certainly doesn't hurt you that that's conditions, especially since they property.
Okay.
I, I have one other question for, for staffs, the guy. Yeah, are there any specific requirements either in the UDC or in larger ordinances like state or historic preservation that would provide any particular protection for the grave sites or any particular higher standard for protecting the grave sites on, from adjacent properties?
No, obviously, the applicant, obviously, the property will have to stay on the grave sites.
Okay.
I got a question for the pastor.
Public hearing is closed. We, we can only, we can only ask questions of the petitioner or staff after we close the public hearing. Sorry about that. I don't make the rules, I'm just the jackboot who enforces them, I'm sorry. Now, if you could phrase the question in a way that staff could answer it, then.
I probably don't understand, but I can ask, guy, the week, does the county know if the church has any more available graves against this site or they all taken? Right, that was the question.
There are no other questions, I'll entertain them. Yeah, I, I felt like that was pretty much taken care of.
Motion to approve the buffer stipulation and not only the buffer stipulation of its maintained. If it's going to be evergrange or whatever it's going to be, that it's maintained in a healthy state so that it doesn't deteriorate over time and not be replaced.
Guy, how would we phrase that? Pretty much just like that? Well done. All right, so we have a motion to approve with an additional buffer condition from Stephen and a second from Scott. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Manaus. The next item would be to vote on the special use allowing for the car wash in this zoning category. Guy, do we need to do anything other than, do you want to give a separate presentation on that or?
No, same presentation.
But we don't need to add a condition to that because it's already on the other one, right?
It is, but it doesn't hurt to have.
Any questions or comments about the special use? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve stipulations.
All right, so we have a motion to, to approve with the buffer condition added from Scott, do we have a second? Second from Mike. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Both motions are approved. Now, what everybody's been waiting for, item five amendments to articles two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen, and appendix A of the Oconee County Unified Development Code.
Thank you, Chair.
Shushing noise, is everybody?
You have, you have in your packets, proposed amendments to articles two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and appendix A. Those are listed in the summary memo there at the beginning of your, your packet. I'll be glad to, to go through these individually if you'd like, or if you would like. I could field questions on those, hopefully, I'll have a chance to review those.
All right, thank you, Guy. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the text amendments? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to the text amendments?
Everybody in the audience get to read that.
Uh, in that case, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. What I'd like to do for, for ease on this one is start on Gavin's end and just go around and ask each commissioner, do you have any questions or comments about any of the amendments?
All right. Fourteen, ethical freedom, fourteen, prohibited personal care homes in major subdivisions. I just, what is, would be the correct, uh, number, what is a major subdivision? And it's not a major subdivision.
Okay.
Five lots, okay.
We ought to check on the definition of a care home too, because if it's two adults in there being cared for, that's okay. But I think a care home is eight or more, isn't it? So we're just talking about homes that take care of eight or more people, can't be in subdivisions. This is the issue. So if you got best friends, you can have them over and get the care going for four people, but not eight. Questions, Jeff?
I saw, uh, number fifteen, first one on the next page. My understanding, uh, move exemption from requirement, great foot privacy fence, or essentially saying no allowed. Exempt, don't you say, move exemption?
Section, uh, three, three, eight. Article three, number fifteen. Three, three, eight, point oh one.
So remove exemption for the, for the requirement of an eight-foot privacy fence. For self-storage and recreation vehicles, campers and boats adjacent to industrial. That's correct, if, if a self-storage facility is on, adjacent to industrial zone property, you would probably not have to do an inch of fines. Okay, we are removing that restriction for the. Okay, so it was required then, that process, that's be. Fully around the entire with the self-storage.
So it would be in the case of industrial.
No.
Is that required, if there was a op or industrial loose, uh, that? What's saying is if they had a, if it, if it shared, say a back property and you're locked behind it, it was a little warehouse or whatever, wouldn't have to worry about that. There's a residential subdivision on the right side of that whole, those two tracks, those were required. That's what, I just want to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, would you prefer us, if we have a comment on that particular question, go ahead and get it over with or wait till it comes around to us?
I don't think there's any better way to do this than the other, I just, I'd like to try to keep it as organized as we can. We can either go by commissioner or we can go by article, but we've kind of already gone away from going by article. So I'd, I'd say let's just go around the, let's go around the horn. Mike, do you have any questions?
No question.
Got a question on that. Well, it is a question about the chickens. I told you I would do that. I noticed that what's removed is the description of what or enclosure can look like. Is there going to be any, any checking on that at all or is it going to wait until you get a complaint about it?
If, if it will become a complaint.
Then, uh, number nineteen. Under short-term rentals. Change that removes inspection by the fire marshal. Is there going to be any inspection by code enforcement?
Yes, that's correct, so in, in my code enforcement, we mean our building official.
Sure.
So under us, uh, with credit force. We have our own, their credit building inspectors, they would be the students.
That's all. Yeah, uh, number six. So, uh, more of a question slash concern, uh, I see that under, if I look at all of the storage facilities table. Self-storage and recreational vehicles, campers and boats would be the only one that is in some way allowed in T1. And I'm wondering why? We don't allow news warehouses, we don't allow really any storage, anything in D1. So why would we want RVs, boats and stuff sitting in parking lot of people? I think that was just, I didn't understand why that was there.
Well, certainly can be, certainly.
Yeah. Yeah, so that was one thing I had, the second one. And pardon me, but this is my first, uh, amendments to the code meeting, so it's kind of like, once something, I, I'm looking at the solar panel. Or, so that's kind of, I'm not involved with solar panels. Here, so I just looked at what's there and, uh, is it number sixteen? It's sixteen. I'm okay with, with that striking part. I had a question, if I can ask a question that's not part of the, the red lines?
You can, but I'd rather.
Okay, can I? So can I? Okay, I just had a question, I'll, I'll see you later on. Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. No questions?
I have a few. What, what constitutes a pay? What constitutes a pay, such as three oh six for the buffer? Three oh six, the exterior. Which I've known. Six, three oh six right before, uh, number seven. Six, three, right above. Out of place. Oh, I'm sorry. Kind of tape. Number seven, which one is right above? Yeah, but right above number seven on three oh six oh one, I'm curious to know what constitutes a pay.
Trash. Yeah, so that one's not, that's not part of the.
All right, let me go, uh, let me go to one of the, number, number, uh, section three, number fourteen. Yeah, personal care home shall be prohibited in major subdivisions. You know, when I read this, just from a qualitative standpoint, I'm thinking, well, what's a major subdivision? When I saw it comes about five pages later, shouldn't we have that before?
The UDC is this entire, so it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have an order.
Okay.
As far as that goes.
Yeah, okay, other, other questions I have are not highlighted, Chris, I'll pass them.
I will schedule a.
We're more interested.
A learning session, a learning session.
I'm going to read it, I'm going to read.
That's what, that's what you wanted, that's what, what you want to hear from your commissioners. Matt, how about you?
I know.
All right, Chuck, go ahead.
All right, um. On, uh, article three, change number ten, where you talk about a hundred feet from adjacent residence. You're not going to permit, uh, buildings or other structures within a hundred feet, are we? Because right now the code says, uh, building that houses animals has to be a hundred feet inside the property line.
Those, uh, yeah, more stringent applies, right? So we can see, uh, the, the. More stringent.
Okay. Because it, I mean, there's a lot of people, like, we're going to spread chicken litter right up to. All right, so then, um, when they were talking about the eight-foot privacy fence, uh, this rule just removes it as a requirement, but, um, we've had many a special use request that it not be required. This, this removes the exemption, but other people, it won't prevent people from coming to us with a special use to ask that they don't be, they don't have to put that fence in, does that mean? I wasn't sure.
Chuck, if I understand what you're saying is this enshrines the requirement that there be an eight-foot privacy fence. But people could still come up and say, I'd like a variance.
Oh, there it is, that's the. Okay. We did, we did really change some of it.
We made it more stringent, not less stringent as far as screening requirements.
Got it, on the short-term rentals. We also, besides changing the inspector, we changed the rental periods, I think. I think it was in red.
How do we define that, Guy? Who's the fine word?
Okay, it's not in red, I'm sorry. So, yeah, right now, maximum, okay, that's not a red, we'll leave it alone for now. All right, then, then the other one was the five acre, uh, or the splits, five oh three now. We're talking about two, two thousand and six tax map, I've got two hundred acres. According to this, I can go ahead and split it into twenty-five acre parcels, right? Because it's a large parcel. Can I then let the dust settle and go ahead and subdivide it into forty-five acre pieces? Or is this rule?
No, one, well, once you get that five mark, right, so you can do that.
That's, that's the limit of. So when I go from two thousand and six, the first time, that's the administrative. Yeah, and so that would be the administrative. Because it, it kind of looked like, uh, in this one, we took away the, any subdivided by this rule couldn't come back to be subdivided by this one.
You're still restricted by.
The originals, okay. So we're not talking about the possibility of two hundred acres tying the nine-six homes, no, okay.
One, one five-lot split administratively and then, or, or five lots split administratively and then that's it, it has to be rezoned.
Well, it has to be a major subdivision.
Gotcha.
I was just checking on that and, uh, can I follow?
So, we'll, we'll let, we'll let Chuck finish his deal and then we'll come back.
I had a question on what you just said.
Yeah.
All right, so that was the last of mine.
Okay, well, there you go.
Yeah. So back to what you just said, so someone has two hundred acres, they split it off into five forty-eight acres. Sales one of them. Does the person that buys that have the right to split that into five? Because it's a new owner?
No, because it's based on that two thousand six map. So the two thousand six map from the UDC was really adopted was essentially created all par.
Okay, so it follows the parcel history, not the. Okay.
Because each of those have to come through our department.
Okay. All right. Yeah, it's just my concern, some of the language that was removed made it sound like I could do a move, I could do a move. recursive splitting.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? All right, there's a couple of ways we can handle this. We can vote on each one of these amendments individually. I beseech you not to ask me to do that. In the alternative, I would suggest that if there's anything that a commissioner objects to and would want to handle individually, we can carve that out and treat the rest of them as a, as a single motion. Are you okay with that, Guy? Okay, is there anything here that, um, that we would want to carve out and deal with individually?
Yeah, Chris, that number six is the only change that I heard. Okay.
Please.
Can we just make that a change to the whole?
Sure can.
Because everything else is just questions.
Yeah.
Questions and clarification.
In which case I'll entertain a suitable motion.
So I, my motion is that we approve the, the amendments with Article six striking the S under B one. I'm just looking at. Had an A before, right? So remind me the difference in A, in, so A is, it's allowed by rights. And you're, you're wanting to move it from A or you're recommending A. I'm okay with B one striking this. That's my.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the package with the elimination of B one as a, an allowed use in item six. Do we have a second? Stephen has a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much, and all we need now is nothing else on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Thank you, folks.
So, Guy, I went to my.